One thing that I would just, go ahead, Trusty Thorpe.
Mr. Wall, clarify if I don't have this right, but getting to what Trusty Moser was saying. I remember in the 2019, we had talked about issuing at different times. We're going out for the authorization for this amount, but we're going to issue the bonds at different times.
Correct, during series, correct.
Because we knew when we were going to be able to use it, knowing that we couldn't put that much money to work that quickly.
Right.
Does that, is that kind of what you're, you're getting to?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're not getting all of the money this time?
It wouldn't all show up in the bank account at the same time. We would, we would make sure because we'd probably be in a losing battle trying to invest it at a rate greater than inflation currently.
Correct.
One thing that I just want to ask is that we hear a lot about the legacy of old buildings and the historical value, which I do believe that they do. But when you compare a building that was built, say way back in the day, as just one that is built new today, structural, the structural soundness, what is the comparison of that, do you know? Because you always hear they don't make them like they used to.
Well, I do have Flatiron Crescent here, so I'll let them.
Okay.
If anyone wants to try to answer that, because that goes beyond my, I would just guess, but we have someone that's actually in the industry.
And I know, of course, it depends on what materials you use, but generally, the materials that are generally used today, compared to what our older buildings are made of currently.
My name is Pat Poch, I'm Vice President, Senior Vice President with Flatiron Crescent, and did a lot of the study that you're talking about. To answer your question, in many ways, they don't build them like they used to. A lot of the, the frame and the structure of some of the older buildings is, is more stable, it's concrete, and it's more solid than a structural steel frame would be. But in other ways, it has its limitations. And so when you talk about infrastructure, technology, infrastructure, making modifications to the walls, it's not as easy, it's not as flexible as new buildings are designed now. So a lot of the new design for schools has a lot to do with space flexibility, and i- in the older buildings, you have limitations as far as that's concerned. With regards to historic preservation, and at what point in time do you make a decision as to whether or not it's worth renovating a school versus building a new school? There's a lot of factors that go into that as well. It could be a change of academic programming, which you can't accommodate in an existing, in an existing building. It could be ADA requirements. A lot of schools were not built for ADA, and sometimes modifications that you have to make to a school to comply almost makes it, does make it cost feasible. So there's structural issues that come into play that, you know, usually are not cheap to solve. But when it comes to HVAC and conditioning space, that's kind of what our focus is right now with the capital improvement program. But to answer your question, it, it's really kind of a loaded question, and there's a lot of factors that go to that decision.
What is the current lifespan of the average school that's built? Do you know that?
Well, schools are built for 30 to 50 years.
Okay.
But it all depends on how they're, well, they're maintained. You know, you, you, you need to keep the envelope, you know, warm, safe and dry. When water starts getting into the building, it causes all kinds of problems to the exterior skin as well as to the interior of the building. So if you have a good maintenance program to address roof systems, tuck pointing of masonry, replacement of windows, doors, you can keep that envelope solid for, you know, as long as you, you know, for much longer period of time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, thank you.
Much better answer than I could have given, much better. All right. So what I want to do is just kind of go, so this chart kind of shows the history of how we've done capital improvement since 2002. So the green lines, there's a key on the bottom, but just, you can't really read that as well. The green lines are dealing with the voted approved bond. So back then, you see the 2002 bonds, they were again, as Trusty Thorpe said, done in two different series. So that's why you see money in the first year and money in the second year. And then 2014, you see the last bond that we've done in the district. The red items are things that we have done for non-voter, non-voter approved bonds that we paid out of our own general fund. That's money that we took out of our operational budget, again, knowing there were bigger projects. So we bonded the money upfront to get it all started together to be more efficient and do more with our money, but we did pay interest back out of our general fund through that process. The yellow are the ESSER funds. So that's re- are recently in 2022 and next year for '23 are ESSER funds that we're spending for the program you saw as part of that capital improvement, that 80 million. And then the blue and orange is what we have contributed. So you can see, leading up to where the ESSER funds, through us being shut down and all that, you saw our blue and orange funds, which orange is our enhancement fund, blue is our operational budget. We were able to save money. Because people have said, you know, well, why aren't you putting more money into it? Because on an operational basis, you can see through the history, we don't have a lot of money in our operational budget to set aside for infrastructure. That's money we're taking away from our own operational program that the state gives us for operational purposes. So we have made a decision internally to set that money aside on annual basis. But you see, leading up through the pandemic, we saved a lot of operational because we were closed and online all that time. That's why we're able to do that $40 million additional with the ESSER funds and combine that into one project where you can be very, very efficient with it. So that's why you see that. But as it progresses, you see, in the future years, we're going to be right back down to our normal 1% to 3% that we can set aside each year. So this kind of gives you a historical perspective, a visual of how we've been putting money aside. As you can see, the green bars are way off the chart. We, and that's how we bring money into it to deal with our infrastructures on an annual basis. And historically, districts are, every about 10 years, they do a bond issue to kind of get their buildings back up to par, new buildings or whatever it may be. Any questions on that slide? So I just wanted to kind of give you a visual, yes.
Not a question, but to make a comment. Tom, this is a very good graph, and I think showing the history. It also kind of shows, if you look, I became superintendent in 2015, and if you look, right there, that line where the budget was, I think it was about $300,000.
Correct.
Now, understand why it was done, we had the bond, but we had just gone off of the turn in the economy on '08, '09, when there was major shortfalls coming from the state. And so what the district decided at the time, and when Mr. Wisdom was there and I was on his cabinet, was we tried to secure instruction in the classroom. And remember that 86% goes for our staff, for the most part. And so we made sure that we maintained a dis- we're one of the lowest elementaries I've ever seen in the district, but we did maintain a low number through all those years. So the only thing that I would also want to say is that when we're adding to, which we need to study and look at, and that's why I think this 30-year study that, you know, Tom, we're going to talk about a little bit, we still have to take care of the, the immediate needs too of our students, both instructionally or otherwise. That ESSER dollars that was levied, or that we received from the federal government, remember, the majority of that money was given at the time of the pandemic to take care of your students for the pandemic. They then allowed for infrastructure, but it was never tagged solely for infrastructure. And you might recall, we had the largest summer program in the state. So those, to me, are very well-spent dollars for our students' instruction that had suffered during the pandemic. And so, Tom, I just wanted to compliment you on this graph, and I think it gives a real nice picture of where we've been. Hence, it also is why there's discussion, and I'm involved in the associations. We have this Launch Michigan proposal. We had the school funding study a few years ago that is basically saying that the Proposal A funding system in Michigan is broken, especially when you hit a downturn in the economy. And one of the things those two groups recognize is that there isn't really a way to take care of infrastructure needs unless you go for a bond, per se. So I just wanted to add some of that for the public. Thank you.
President McDonald.
Trusty Deambrosio.
Tom? Question is, a single structure versus a double structure, cost-wise?
It, it's more expensive to go higher than just the main structure. That's why I see most schools just on the mains. But it all depends on the space available too. For example, Dearborn High, we were able to do another fourth classroom addition on the ground, but after that, we would have to go higher. So it's a more cost per square foot to do that. And I, and there's some instructional things. I believe what K, up to K or 1, I think has to be on the main floor. So that's why you don't see a lot of elementaries that are, you know, second story, because you have to have early grades on a ground floor for fire code.
Thank you.
Trusty Thorpe.
Going back to what Dr. Malakos said, there were several years after we were coming out of the recession where what we put into the buildings was very low. And we mentioned that we were scraping the bottom at about $300,000. Normally, in a normal year, I'd say we are averaging $2 to $3 million. But by not spending that money on the buildings, that went back into personnel. And that's probably keeping 25 or 30 people employed, which might mean teachers in classrooms helping out students. And because we chose to sacrifice on the buildings right then to support the students and the staff, we got behind, and that's one of the reasons we're, why we're here today. Thanks.
Okay, so the second part opposite is dealing with the millage rate. So this graph here shows the different bond options that were out there that we discussed at the last meeting. The red line is where our current levy is at. Now, I've updated this after the 2002 refunding. You can see it follows closely to that, but it ends actually a year earlier than we were before. So that's how we were able to save taxpayers' future money by refunding at a lower interest rate. So we actually didn't change it along the process because we accelerated payments to make it end earlier and save taxpayers' money. So that's what the purple line shows, that actually ends at 31, 32, where the previous one ended in 32, 33. So that's how we showed the savings. Now, also I have on there is the sinking fund. So you can see the very top of the scale is 3.5 mils. So any bond issue we did for going out would stay at the 3.5 mils to maybe 30, 31. I don't, I can't see vertically very well. But after that, it would start going down through time to where the bonds were being paid off. Now, one of the short-term solutions that we talked about was a sinking fund. So you can see here that, talked about reduced one year. The sinking fund, a one-mil sinking fund is that dotted blue line. So it's looking at what our current millage rate would be and adding one additional mil as the other debt fund came off. Then you would see it's just short of 2.5 mils. And it progressed slowly down because the tax base would go up. And so eventually, that would end for, if you did a maximum of 10 years, in 32, 33. That would raise roughly $43 million and change over that 10-year span. So it's not all the money you get in year one, but 43 million over that 10-year span. And so every year, you would get that, yes.
For one mil, right?
For one mil. So it's 3.7, but as the tax base slowly rises, you know, you get 3.75, 3.8. So over that time span, you get $43 million.
In 10 years?
Over the 10-year period.
Over 10 years, not?
Yes, not all at once, over 10 years. Sinking fund is pay as you go.
Yeah.
This red mil is the two mil. So you can see that we raised levy to two mil, it'd be closer to 3.4, and it gradually scaled down for the 10 years. And that would raise $86 million over that 10-year span. Now, I didn't show a three-mil solution or an opportunity just because our committee itself wanted to maintain the 3.5 mils. So I didn't want to actually go higher than that, so I did an example of what you could go up to the max of three mils if you wanted to. But you can see it closely doubles, so you would just add another, so it'd be 129, 130 million if you did a three-mils over the 10-year span. And you're only allowed to do a maximum of 10 years. So at that point, you would have to renew it if you wanted to go out for another sinking fund. And again, and this millage is not a guarantee. The board, every year, decides what level of millage they want to levy. It could be one, next year it could be .5. Really, the board decides that on an annual basis, but it can't exceed what the committee.
What the voters voted.
So I just want to give you another example of a short-term solution that could be possibly done also.
Okay, again, that sinking fund, it's a maximum of three mils over 10 years. That's the maximum that you could possibly go for.
Right, because, you know, obviously, if we do a longitude study in our buildings, that would be a long-term plan. So we need something outside of our own money if you want to do more improvements than what we could afford internally.
Trusty Barry.
So, so I know how to answer this question, we expect to answer it later tonight or tomorrow. So if we go, let's see if we go with the two mil, over 10 years. That's roughly about $86 million.
Correct.
Am I correct to think that that's, we're going to be getting between eight and nine million dollars a year?
Correct.
Over the next 10 years?
Correct.
Okay, going back to the slides just before that, as Trusty Thorpe pointed out, that we're on track of spending anywhere between two, three, sometimes four million dollars.
Correct.
We are behind, we know, we know. The meetings, looking at the information, we are behind. So if there is not a appetite to go out for 240-some-million-dollar bond now because of all this craziness going on in this world and everything else happening. So if we were to do that, and I'm not saying that's, like, see, I just want to see, if we were to do that, and we get to 2026 and we get to the point where, okay, we need to go out for a bond, at that point, we can stop the sinking.
Correct.
The board can.
Correct.
If the, if the, the bond gets approved.
Correct.
If not, we can continue getting eight to nine million dollars going into our building site. Now, that, that money is just going towards updating buildings.
Yeah, it would go on that priority list, which are, as, you know, Mr. Hodges said before, building envelope is our most important thing, roofs, tuck pointing, you get, make sure it's sealed. So one, the air conditioning works well, you know, there's no water getting into it because that destroys both inside and outside.
Okay, going back to that one chart where what buildings need, is there any way you can break it down that like this is mandatory the next two years?
Well, that's where that one chart shows the one to three-year period is what we would focus on.
Okay.
Now, obviously, I still would.
That's what we would focus on, can we sharpen our pencils and say, yeah, maybe we can work with these numbers to lower them?
Well, we could, yes. You know, those are just estimates based on a square footage basis. We would actually have to get the architects in here to decide if we want to do bathrooms, for example, what's the standard? As you know, in your own household, if you do a kitchen or bathroom, you can spend this much money or you can spend this much money.
Sure, exactly.
So that's where you start valuing what you actually want to spend on a given project.
Very good information, thank you very much.
Trusty Thorpe.
Talking about, about the different funding mechanisms, we also have the ability where we could go for a bond and a sinking fund at the same time, correct?
Correct, it could be a combination. You could do a lesser amount bond for, let's say, 50 million, and then also do a sinking, one or two sinking funds in that scenario, yes.
So based on the idea of if people want a new building, that could be in a bond where we could do a sinking fund that's going to be more the ongoing maintenance?
Correct.
Thanks.
And it could also be part of a long-term plan too.
Right.
That once you get the bond issue done, then long-term, you can say, we want to levy a sinking fund later, you know, in maybe 10, 15 years, that's part of the long-term plan to actually have some more than what we can do on an annual basis internally through our operational funds.
Trusty Barry asked a question earlier, if you have a sinking fund and you decide after four years or whatever, you're no longer interested in using it, you can discontinue it?
Correct.
You could not, in two years, jump back into it?
As long as it's within that 10 years, yes you can. You can stop it and go as much as you.
Okay, as long as you're in that 10-year window.
Yes, and if you're at 10-year mark, you'd have to go out for a renewal of that, that millage.
After the 10.
After that 10 years.
Okay.
If you get a bond approved, it'd be very brave to go back and double that.
But, but that's what the, would you have to approve it again, or no, it's set up there?
It's there, it's good.
It's still there, yeah.
Every year is part of the budgetary process, we actually bring the millage rates to the board every year and talk about it, yes.
Okay.
Madam President?
Uh, Trusty Moser.
Thank you. So, looking in the past few years at nearby districts, they've been very, as Trusty Thorpe said, some even went to get a bond and a sinking fund at the same time, and they got it approved. Now, they're very lucky, but.
It all depends what the constituents want, yes.
Right, yeah, but why, why sinking funds now are more popular, do you think?
Because it's limited, people know exactly what the number of mils will be. You know, if, if on a bond issue, you're, you're paying back a mortgage. So if the economy does worse, you know, you're going to have to pay maybe a little bit more mils. The mils isn't guaranteed, where the sinking fund is pay as you go.
And, and I, when I talked to Trusty Bougeia, who used to serve on this board way before we were here, she mentioned that this was a practice back in the 80s and the 90s where they were getting money to spend on, you know, they get, get money every year and then they spend it right away on.
Yeah, in the past, before Proposal A, the board on their own, you know, consciously could actually go to the public and say, we're going to raise the mil, one mil, and set aside for this purpose.
Wow.
Since 1994, we're no longer able to do that with the Proposal A passing.
Yeah, Mary Bougeia was on the board in 1981.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, she's a friend of mine, so, so I.
Watch yourself, watch yourself.
Yeah, but, but no, I'm just, yeah, well.
I'm just trying to add a little humor, because this is a very difficult discussion, I'm just trying to add a little humor to everything.
But Proposal A is what really, Headley Amendment and Proposal A really changed the dynamics of school funding in such a variety of ways that everybody had to change their strategies in order to continue to, you know, supplement their, the revenues.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Trusty Petrichov, before, you can go out and raise money, put it in a jungle fund and pay your teachers, you can't do that.
A lot of things have changed, our pension rate, before, in the early 90s, we paid zero for pensions.
Yeah. It was, it was a whole different ballgame with the.
I remember, 78, wearing my Wildcat, my Wildcat jersey and knocking on doors because the district was going up for a bond and got approved.
Yeah.
And that was a whole different story back then.
Well, if I may?
Sure.
But at the time, we were selling that we're going to build a number of schools.
No, it was way before that, way before that.
Way before, maybe like 2002?
Yeah, I'm that old, I can see way before.
I know, I, that's what I remember is there was a bond that failed.
Building schools then with it.
We were considering closing schools and.
Yeah, we did close schools.
I remember.
No, 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 but I'm talking about 2002, or you guys are talking about a different era?
Late 70s, early 80s.
Okay, then, that was a different story.
We're going back before you were born.
I know.
Wish I could say the same.
I had, I had a question about, uh, skipped my thought, but it's, um, yeah, I'll, if I remember, I'll ask.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'm not going anywhere.
Just one last question.
Trusty Barry.
Sinking fund, tax base raising, obviously, we need more money.
Yep, so as it raises, that mil raises that dollar value. Now, if it raises higher than the rate of inflation, the Headley effect will limit that. So it goes back, it actually gets down less than a mil, depending on the Headley impact, every year.
Thank you.
I remember my question.
Trusty Moser.
Thank you for that break, Trusty Barry. So if, if we're looking at the scenario for the two mils for the sinking fund, then we will kind of work in a way where there would not be, and I want to be very careful here with my words, so they won't be miscreant, or misused. We will not be increasing the tax mil, or we will be keeping the same amount of mils that folks are paying, correct?
Well, actually, it would go down.
It will go down by how much?
Because it's going to go down less than 3.5 what they're paying now. Because right now, the 3.5 is what they're paying next year. It would actually go down to less than 3.5, 3.3, 3.2.
The maximum that we can go for a sinking fund is three mils.
Three mils, which will actually be higher than what they're paying.
Right, so it will go down .5, since it's slated to go down. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because we still have the existing millage there, as that chart shows, until 32, 30, 31, 32.
Hmm, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
So, and, Mr. Wall, I'm going to ask you to maybe possibly remain up, and Mr. Mustin in too, for this part. Where we just kind of mapped out under threes, just some options based on, you know, listening to the community with the VIP committee, with the high school issue being out there. And I obviously wasn't with the committee, you guys didn't serve as members, but you were there for information, help guide. And so when they presented last time, we were between, you know, infrastructure, you know, renovations versus new facilities. But when you go for that mil that was being recommended as a 3.5, you, you don't have an endless budget, so where do you make that balance? Some of the buildings that I know, and I'll let them jump into if needed, you know, the, the one area was upgrading, the bathrooms keeps coming up, and I know the committee presented it under number one. You know, there'd be renovations, we do see lory as, you know, a huge need, I mean, we have needs everywhere. But lory is an area, I think, where there's a high number on there if we were to renovate. We also, as far as new buildings, we were throwing around potentially a new elementary, but possibly maintaining some of the old because we also need space. But we also know that the current lory needs some upgrades, like other buildings. Based, coming out of the committee, we had ideas like a STEM, possibly a STEM, another STEM school or something similar. You look at innovation and technology. And then I will just say, we, we have it on the first one, that we, we do believe, you know, a special education building or wing is needed for our students. And the next one, to keep our eye on where the target's going to be, or where Jim, Trusty Thorpe would say, where the puck's going, the quote that he uses with Wayne Gretzky is GSRP, early childhood. That would be an issue for us with space. We would not be able to have a massive expansion. We already kind of deal with at the local level spot, you know, places. So having, you know, if we were able to somehow have a STEM or a technology school or something, maybe, and again, these are ideas, part of it came, I know it was ideas that came out of the committee, but we have the GSRP one on the east end, maybe we need something over on the west end, maybe the same with the STEM. We have a STEM, but maybe we need some other kind of innovative program. If you look on there, number three, and Mr. Wall can speak to this one. We heard from the committee that the fourth high school issue was something that sounded like the committee discussed in depth. And if we'd, Tom, as far as going on this ballot, we think that we, it would be difficult to get that done in that short timeframe. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Tom?
No, there's just a lot of logistics, you know, how would the, the, which students would attend this session? Or go to that school, or the land purchase, a lot of those things are unknowns that I think we've seen in the last bond issue. People need to know those kind of things to kind of make a decision of whether to vote yes or no. So I think that's more of a something that we should discuss as a long-term plan if a fourth high school. That way, we make sure we get all the feedback and everybody knows what's going to happen, and they can share their opinion on it.
And then that leads us to number four, thank you for segueing in, which is our administration, Matt, after hearing the VIP, listening to what we're hearing out in the public, we understand that, you know, we did the Zogby survey last year, both because of the millage rate in the city, but also, you know, gas prices and things going on internationally slash inflation. These are all factors that we know is difficult time for a lot of people, given the pandemic and everything that we're dealing with. So that's why we also think that this number four is another way, option for the board. But that, if we did go with number four, obviously, we wouldn't be ready for a November ballot of this year. But our team also feels like it would be difficult under number three as well. If we wanted to do one or two, we could, we could, I think, have a plan in that timeframe that the board, we kind of set the May deadline. But right now, given the feedback, and the other thing is, we're going to collect more data too. So, you know, once we get the survey data and we get the town hall, we'll get more public opinion, so we don't yet, we're not, we haven't finished all the data collection. But after the VIP committee came forward, I don't know, David, if you want to add anything to that or just to feel between you and Tom, but we kind of feel right now that maybe it's also a time to just, we know there's a need. And so when I say that, there's a couple of factors too. One is we know inflation and the cost. We would have, if the 19 bond went, you know, the costs of building right now has obviously gone up. But, you know, when we're looking at things, so we look at that graph. And the reason why I really like this, this graph that Tom showed on the screen is because if you look at right now, we are still putting, look at the general fund. We've been contributing and adding to the general fund as well. Since I've been superintendent, every year, we no longer borrow any money, you know, we're saving on. So we know we're going to need to take care of those things. But then people just have to understand that when there's a budget, and we just presented at the national conference, there's the best case, or the most likely, the best and worst-case scenario. In 2020, if we were dealing with a budget shortfall, then there are some things we can't afford. You know, the staffing goes into the mix. We also know we are in a teacher retention shortage situation, so we had to invest in that. So every time we are in our meetings for budget, wherever we add, we have to take somewhere. We bus, we have buses. You know, there's all sorts of factors that go into it. So when we, if we didn't have a bond, I, I, I'm not saying every bathroom, but the ba- the roofs, the electrical, the plumbing, all those will be on a higher priority list than upgrading the bathrooms. That's just the reality, even though it's a popular thing right now. We want to upgrade the bathrooms, but we need to keep, you know, the schools dry and keep everyone safe and, you know, keep the, the, the heating going, those kind of things. So I don't know if, gentlemen, you want to add anything to that, but I'm just trying to paint the longer picture of where we think we are.
No, I think you did a good job.
Okay.
Trusty Watts.
So looking at these two graphs, so, and I think this is where Mr. Wall might have to come back, sorry. So looking at the one graph that has it in terms of critical need, one to three years, four to six, seven to 12. I mean, on average, we're looking anywhere between a scale of 200 I mean, on average, we're looking anywhere between a scale of two hundred thousand to three hundred thousand. But it was discussed before from Trustee Thorpe, that some of the items that needed to get done were put on hold because of the recession from the years before. In a non-recession, average year where we're not trying to play catch-up, what do you think would be the base expenses just to maintain our current ex, our current structural expenses?
That's a loaded question, cause may, you know, we have so many buildings and the needs change constantly. You know, a boiler might fail that wasn't expected to fail, and then the cost repair is, doesn't make sense, you might as well just replace it. So typically, we look at the percentage, so we would normally put anywhere from one to two percent aside annually for those kind of activities. We're able to do more now, cause we've had the enhancement millage, so we'll be able to put more aside to kinda help us catch up. But the, at some point, the enhancement millage might not continue, so that's something we have to worry about in future years. It just got retained for another six years. So we're okay for the next six years on that aspect. So we're closer to two percent. So we're putting aside roughly about eight million dollars a year to, for ongoing costs. But, you know, you can only replace or refurbish something for so long, at some point, it just needs to be replaced in totality.
And if we recall too, a few years back with the enhancement, the addition that we took care of the issue over at Derwin High.
Correct.
Um, we're also in discussions, you know, we know that Hague really needs space, so those are pressing issues right now for us to deal with.
And, and we might have some money left over, cause obviously, we have about twenty-four million left in the S R three funds that we've not obligated yet. We know a good portion of that will be for summer school, as we're starting to, you know, gear up for that project, that, we're estimating that's around fifteen million. So we'll never have another six to eight million to be able to do something with. And that six to eight million, we might be looking at the Hague issue of dealing with that overcrowding issue, because that does, you know, the projections does not show that slowing down. So it's something we have to act sooner than later. So there's go, those things are gonna pop up that our normal allocation is not gonna be able to handle.
Trustee Thorpe.
Mr. Wall, you're never gonna sit down for this presentation.
Someone move the table on me.
Yeah, what happened to the table we were supposed to?
Going, going back to the uh, the uh slide ten that shows the, the history of the capital funding. You mentioned in the past, the district has done bonding itself.
Correct.
Is that something that can be considered at all in this case? Why, why not?
It can, but it comes from operating purposes. So that's something we.
I'm sorry, I just tried to be a question.
So he was asking the question about the red sections on there where we've done our own bonding.
Okay.
A lot of that were for athletic fields, cause we knew in the last two thousand two bond, that athletic fields was not something that was very popular, but still needed to be addressed. So a lot of that red one dealt with putting the artificial turf, you know, places into three high schools, knowing that it's lower maintenance costs going forward, and you can use it more than what we were using currently. So that was an operational decision to save on the backend. The other thing that we're working on right now is also a energy improvement bond, where you actually replace lighting, boilers, and the, the savings you get for operational purposes theoretically pay back that bond. And so we're, we're still working through that issue. Now, the facility report includes that cost right now, cause it's a need. So we're looking through that process, but we're just starting that process, so we're probably good three to four months away of actually making a decision and designing it of what it would could actually do.
The other part of the question then would be, if we went forward with sinking fund, and then we could assume we're getting about four point three million dollars per year. Can we take that then and get a loan where the payment's gonna be about four point three million dollars per year, so we can get a larger dollar amount upfront?
Yes, I've done it in the past where you actually bond against your sinking fund. It's similar to a general fund bond where you have dedicated revenue sources to pay back those bonds. The only problem is, you do pay interest, so you don't get the full value of that, but it's a shorter term bond, so you, you can do that to make it more efficient of doing the repairs all at one time.
And can that, does that sidestep the whole idea that it has to be for infrastructure? Or would it still be that, okay?
So if you actually bond, well, no, you still have to follow the revenue source, cause that's what's paying back those bonds. So you can't quote it as a bond versus sinking fund. Where our general fund money, it could be used for anything. That's where our philosophy is always spending the most restricted fund first and working back, because our general fund could be used for anything for educational purposes.
Thanks.
Trustee Petrichoff. And the general fund bonds, there is a limitation to them as well, isn't there?
Yeah, you're, you're allowed to bond up to five percent of your state equalized value, but right now, we're well below that.
So what, what kind, so, so that people understand, how much money would we be talking about potentially use if we wanted to go the general fund bond route?
One sixty, one seventy-ish?
One hundred and seventy million, probably.
Okay. Anyone else?
All right, I'll try to sit down again.
Okay, very good discussion. Excellent. Um, next item.
Citizen participation. Um, we have two blue cards. The first one is from Dr., uh, Dr. Moser would like to come and speak to the board off the bottom.
You said we had two blue cards?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I was also one of the uh, members of the VIP committee. And I want to come to you, to speak to you, to express some points. Um, first of all, there was a lot of meetings, a lot of data, and I wanna appreciate, wanna thank the, the admin team and the members for providing all those and working with us, um, as those. As you guys talked about and see, there's a lot of needs that need to be met here. Um, what complicate things is some of the things that has been mentioned, but I just wanna um, talk about them and share with them. One is the issue that the district has not invested an annual basis to address the infrastructure. And yes, there was a economy downturn in two thousand eight, but you've been building the year-end balance to forty-plus million dollar while neglecting really needy infrastructures. When roofs start leaking on students, when chemistry labs are like from the eighties or the sixties, you have to one time say, we need to address these essential needs right away. So that, that, that point is very important, because um, the, when we talk about bonds usually in a community, hearing from the, looking at strict historical uh precedence, that bonds has been um, giving for essential infrastructure needs. Hard infrastructures, not soft infrastructures. And now, yes, there is needs, but do we have to meet them with, guess, bonds? Or is there other ways to meet those needs? Um, the district also seemed like to lack a clear vision of the future. And what I'm saying by that is that we talk, we heard dealing the committee, but about the vision, the pieces of it. Uh, examples are, there was a program for uh cybersecurity that was proposed but did not get implemented because of space. Things like that, but there was not a clear vision, what programs are we going to continue? You know, we hear about STEM, maybe STEM, maybe not, maybe something else, we don't know, but we need the space. That's not how I would see a district this size look at things. So you need that concrete plan. We need a STEM program, yes, let's go out and get the fund and ask the public to support it. If we don't need it, then we don't talk about it, that's not on there. But it seemed like we don't have a clear vision, what programs are we continuing and expanding? What programs are we discontinuing? What programs do we need to add in terms of structured programs? You know, especially in the secondary pro- um, aspect. We also seem like we have not been innovative or uh, uh, working to, um, and I'm not pla- putting claims, I'm just putting points where we can think about, how can we approach these different, like, examples are, uh, a lot of companies around us, especially Fordmore Company, is restructuring and reconsolidating their spaces. And their, uh, the need for office space is less with people working from home and all those changes. Have we engaged with these big companies around us, what buildings they don't need, so we can take them, repurpose them, that we can use? Run them if we can buy them and use them for less cost than when we need to go buy. But that needs to be, we need a vision first, and then come the aspect of how to support it with what buildings we need. Um, so I just wanna say, you know, I'm deeply involved in this district and love this district. We want something that we want to be able to go to the public and sell and get them to, to approve. We, we did it last twen- in twenty nineteen, we came short. Uh, I hope this board worked hard to come up with a proposal that we can get behind. And uh, because the, the needs are huge, uh, we need a proposal, a bond that meets the future and create new realities, new programs for our students. And there are many great programs that exist right now. We need to decide, do we need to add them, do we need to increase them, do we need to add more? What exactly our vision for the future and how can this infrastructure support it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and the next one, uh, Fane Nemer would like to come and speak to the board about infrastructure needs.
Good evening, um, trustees, Dr. Milakow. So I have several topics that I'd like to discuss tonight. Um, I'll try to keep it brief. The first two, uh, they're in order of priority to me personally, so the first two are very personal in nature. Uh, March sixteenth, as you're aware, Fortson was placed under a lockdown. Uh, as Dr. Milakow tries to uh, refer to it as a soft lockdown for the people that were in the building, Dr. Milakow. They do not differentiate between a soft lockdown and a non-soft lockdown. Um, I'm speaking uh, from a, a perspective of infrastructure, because we invested very heavily into the HAWK system, which is the alarm um, within the s- the bounds of the school, and seventeen classrooms, uh, that alarm uh, did not engage as uh, expected. So a lot of faculty, a lot of staff members within the bounds of the school were not aware that there was a suspect in the parking lot. Uh, that put a lot of uh, students' lives in danger, a lot of teachers' lives in danger, a lot of staff members' lives in danger as well. So as I became aware of the situation, um, I became aware of it from a phone call from my son that day. Telling me, Mom, did you hear what happened at our school? I said, no, what's going on? He said, I had to pile tables and chairs at my physics lab door in order to prevent any intruder from coming into our, our classroom to make sure that the rest of the students are safe in my classroom. This is a call no parent would ever want to receive from their child, and for me to find out from my child was even more devastating. There's lack of communication there as well. So we heavily invested into the HAWK, you know, alarm system, it's not operating properly. The teachers' union brings us to that tension of Dr. Milakow. Um, unfortunately, uh, his response, Dr. Milakow, your response, I hope you agree with me that it was very, uh, it was not very sensitive. Um, and I'll read the exact, you know, wording in the response. Hi, Jane and all, yesterday was a soft lockdown that lasted for only a few minutes. That's how you started your response to the teachers' union, bringing this matter to your attention, and basically saying that there is an issue, it needs to be addressed. The alarm did not engage in a certain number of classrooms, it's placing, you know, faculty, staff members, students' lives at risk. Um, I would like to reference the Oxford uh, school shooting, which lasted for a span of five minutes. The lockdown at Fortson lasted for seven minutes. So time is of the essence, and for the individuals that are involved, that are on the premises, it is very critical for them to be notified immediately, because before law enforcement shows up at their doorsteps, they're able to mitigate that danger with, you know, similar measures that my son was following in his, in his physics lab by, you know, making sure that um, the classroom is not as easy to, um, you know, penetrate and uh, making sure that his classmates and the faculty are, have Alice training to ensure that they're able to uh, make sure that the students are within a safe environment. So it was very disheartening for me as a parent to learn that this was your response to the teachers' union, that this was your way of undermining and belittling their request and your attention to the matter. My child attends that school as many other children do, faculty members and staff members. And for the superintendent to address it in such a manner, I, I felt that was very reckless. Second topic on my list, my son, um, you call it upgrading bathrooms, Dr. Milakow, I call it necessary privacy. Um, my son had, was marked as absent today from his uh, language arts class from, from English, because he had to go to a nearby business in order to use the restroom. Restrooms for male students at Fortson do not have doors. This is by design, this is not vandalism, as some, as some people try to communicate, by design, by engineering, they do not have doors. So if you, I've had uh, parents come to the PTA meetings and tell me, my child waits until they come home in order to use the restroom. Is this acceptable? I mean, this is regular maintenance. This is not waiting on a two hundred fifty million dollar bond, this, this is not waiting on a quarter billion dollar bond in order for us to fix our bathrooms. This is not a, you know, a cosmetic upgrade to the bathroom. This is a necessary privacy issue. I don't want my child going off school premises in order to use the restroom. I don't want parents coming to PTA meetings and saying, my child cannot use the restroom at Fortson, they have to wait until they come home. That's very, you know, like, again, it's very unfortunate reality that we're dealing with. And it should not, you know, contend on a bond issuance to be addressed. As Dr. Moser, uh, sorry, uh, Dr. uh, uh, Moser had alluded to earlier, this is regular maintenance and it's been neglected for a while. Um, electric bus, Mr. Andrews, um, I, I promised that I would bring that up, uh, just.
Can I ask you not to use people's names, please?
Okay, I, I won't.
Thank you.
I, I've used Dr. Milakow's.
I know, but, but when you say superintendent, everybody knows who you're talking about.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
With respect to the electric buses, um, when I saw that number, I had the same reaction that you did, Trustee Moser, uh, with respect to the four hundred and thirteen thousand, you know, price tag on that. I realized we're getting three hundred thousand dollars as a grant uh, towards that purpose. Um, one thing that I did is, I just did a search. I said, you know, how much does it cost for an electric bus? And um, I came to find out that New York is heavily investing in this space, and they're actually doing a more innovative and creative, um, you know, approach of uh, retrofitting existing diesel buses to be electric vehicles. It's called repower, the actual process, it's repower, and it costs a hundred and twenty-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand. So for the price tag that we're paying for one electric bus, new electric bus, we could retrofit three, and we could have three electric buses. So I'm saying this as an example, as a prelude to some of the infrastructure needs, you know, that we've heard through these town hall sessions, through the study sessions. One of which is building a new building for a hundred and eighty-eight million. And I think it's been brought up by several trustees that other districts have been able to accomplish the similar feat for under fifty million. Why are we spending four times, four X that, so, that amount? So again, you know, if we're looking to build trust with the community, if we're looking to build trust with the constituents, we need to address these points. You know, why are we paying a premium for uh, certain aspects of infrastructure? Um, again, with the, with respect to the recent bond issuance, and I'll address this, you know, more pointedly. We want to gain the trust of the, of the constituents. Um, you know, we are the taxpayers, we're the ones that will effectively um, make sure that this is the long-term vision that we uh, assign, you know, espouse, and that we all, also sign up for. Uh, twenty, thirty-year uh, plan that's uh, laid out by the administration as well as the school board members. If we want to do that, if we want to garner the support of the constituents, we need to eliminate a lot of conflict of interest that exists in the current bond issuance in the arrangement. For instance, I'll um, mention the, uh, the way that we're coming up with all of these numbers. You know, uh, when I, when the bond did not pass in twenty nineteen, we had a bond issuance in Ann Arbor, but that was a billion dollars. And, you know, a lot of the administration uh, said, oh, well, Ann Arbor was able to do it, why aren't we able to accomplish it? But what they failed to do is um, evaluate what happened in Ann Arbor, what preceded that bond issuance, what, you know, what preceded it in terms of information, in terms of a facility's condition assessment, for instance, that was performed by an independent third-party agency, not by the architectures, uh, architects and engineers that will be taking on the contracts, rather by an independent. that will be taking on the contracts, rather by an independent third-party agency. Um, so if we want to eliminate those trust issues, we need to make sure that we're eliminating the conflict of interest. The next point is, um, we have consultants and a public auditing firm that we're, you know, uh, if we're able to pass the bond issuance, they get a commission, so it's commission-based. If you want to gain the trust of the constituents, you need to eliminate and restructure that arrangement. Um, eliminate that commission-based uh, arrangement and fee, fee-based structure. For, for instance, if I uh, think of it as my CPA and I'm going to prepare my tax returns, it's illegal for my CPA to say, I want a percentage based on the refund that I'm able to get you. If I'm a business and the CPA under, um, completes the audit for my business, they are, it is illegal for them to say, I need a percentage based on how much wasteful spending or how much theft I'm able to identify in your business. So, when we have a consultant and we have a public auditing firm that's benefiting, you know, by the mere issuance of this bond, that creates a trust issue with the taxpayers. Um, and then lastly, we have a fund balance of fifty-one million of the financial statements, the most recent ones are the accurate ones presented tonight. Um, it just baffles me that a lot of these uh, maintenance issues go neglect- neglected for so long without being addressed. Um, I don't know what it takes in terms of really conveying to you the need, the urgency, that some of these items need to be addressed on a regular, ongoing basis, rather than waiting for a bond issuance to address them. They're not a upgrade, they're a necessity. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing your concerns. Um, one thing I would like to say, uh, you may have noticed that I let the people that came to us tonight speak for a while. Um, the reason being is because we had two blue cards. Um, we set aside some um, time for citizen participation. When we have a large stack of blue cards, we really have to be cautious about how many times and watch our, our three minute, our three-minute time limit. So just so people don't think I'm playing favorites, that's the, the purpose behind that.